Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, October 5. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting, so the members of the public are welcome to participate either in person or remotely. In person, if you can't tell, we are at the Norton Public Library, 68 East Main Street. If you'd like to join online via video, which it looks like some people have, you can use the Zoom link posted on the meeting agenda available here. Or if you prefer to join via the Zoom app, the meeting ID is 638-929-1060. There's also a dial number posted on the agenda if you want to call in that way. The meeting's also being streamed on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. In addition, you can feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting or even during the meeting to Paul Di Giuseppe, the town planner, whose email address is posted on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Again, as we have all been dealing with COVID-19 since March of last year, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting again is being conducted in person and as a courtesy, via remote means in accordance with the applicable law. Please note what the option for remote attendance and participation is being provided. As a courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting we're hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, so we will continue. So with that, I'm going to take a bit of a break talking and kind of go into our agenda here in terms of general business, in terms of planning board business and policies. Do we have anything here to discuss, Paul?
Not business or policy.
Okay. And we don't have any bills or warrants at this time, correct?
Yeah, we have the Verizon bill.
Okay. Which is, ah, yes, the cellphone bill, which is, okay. If any would like to take a look at the bill here, they certainly can. This is for the cellphone for Paul, which I think is, we can all agree, is a fairly necessary business item at this moment in time. So I'll take a look, maybe you can take a look at that if they want, and I'll sign it at the end. And Paul, I guess I'll welcome our new member of the team here, if you want to give an introduction or not, your choice.
Are you asking me or Paul?
Either one.
Go ahead.
I'm Brian Carmichael. I'm Paul's new secretary, and I'll be helping you guys in ZPA.
Okay.
Welcome, Brian.
Welcome, Brian.
Yes, welcome, Brian.
You're welcome.
I'm sure Paul's given you lots of minutes that we have to catch up on, and we'll
Years' worth.
We'll get there. Okay. So with all those things out of the way, the first thing on the agenda this evening is an approval-not-required endorsement. Number is 11831. There's also another one, 11830. Those are for 15 Leonard Street and 40 Leonard Street, and the applicant is Condit Construction. I know there's members of the team here. So I will look at these two agenda items first, and then we'll move on to the rest of the items separately, if that works for you, too.
Sure. Okay. So the first one, the 15 Leonard, the plans were submitted, which is a combining of what we're termed is the parking lot that was constructed via the backside of building core. So that was parcel B. It will become part of what we termed as Lot 4B. So for everyone that can understand that's here. So it's, what we're talking about is this parcel where the parking lot was built was originally parcel 3A. That's being combined with Lot 4B, which is the building four, where the building is 125,000 square feet. And then the remaining two lots will become one lot, which is Lot 1A, which is at the, where the retail was originated.
Okay. So that map represents both of the A and Rs that were, that are here?
Correct.
Yep. So one is combining the lots, and that's the Pitney Bowes Building, correct?
Correct. That's right.
Okay.
And then 5A stays the same, right, Jeff?
5A stays the same.
Okay.
Okay. Sure, can I ask?
Please.
Jeff, I know you're combining lots, essentially ones, lots one and two together. Are you still proposing two retail buildings?
At this point in time, yes, we would propose it, but it'd be under a single land ownership, so it would be under a ground lease.
Okay. And we have a question from Oren Siegel. Does the common driveway need to be included on this plan? Noted. Appears these parcels are under separate ownership. Has the easement arranged or these parcels been recorded?
The easements for the parcels have all been recorded in the reciprocal leasing agreement, so that's already in place. That's there. The driveways have already been included previously, and as far as any future easement that's between Lot 1 and 2, it really only benefits Lots 1A, where that right turn-in was. So it only benefits this lot only. So, but easements are all in place.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board regarding, hey, this is two different A and R endorsements represented on this map here?
Let me pull up the second as well.
This is the second one. So the first one was 15 Leonard.
Okay. So all of what you're suggesting is just for 15 Leonard?
Correct.
My apologies, I was a bit, I was not clear on that. Okay. And then 40 Leonard?
40 Leonard is a extension of the cleanup of roadway widening that we went through the last time in our last meeting. So when the Leonard Street was widened all the way down, that little sliver, there's about a four-foot sliver that's in the front of the parcel of Lot 7, Building 7's lot, and that is the area which is being deeded over to the town. So since that was deeded to the town, we have to do a new A and R for the rest of the lot.
Okay. So I see where you got it, parcel B and C, Jeff, right? And it's like hashed, like this?
Right. The remainder, there's about a four-foot swath coming over the front.
It's not big enough for the label to hold it?
Right.
Yeah.
So that forced us to do the whole A and R for the back lot, and that will be termed Lot 7B.
Okay. Again, I'll open up to members of the board if they have any questions regarding either of these A and R lot-line changes. Paul, I'm not sure if anyone else has come in through via email or via chat. Have any, have multiple digital channels going on?
Very flexible in the town. I'm not seeing any chats coming in.
Okay.
I'll motion to endorse the A and R for 15 Leonard Street. We should do them separately.
Yes, we should. Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go through a roll. I'll start in person, and I'll end with Kevin, you there remotely via the chat. So I'll start with Julie.
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Okay. And I will vote yes. That's 15 Leonard Street.
Chair, motion to endorse A and R, the A and R at 40 Leonard Street.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to endorse the A and R for 40 Leonard Street? Okay. Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll sign all those at the end of the meeting, if that works.
That's fine.
Okay. Next on the agenda is continuation of public hearings 11419, 11450, and 11451 relating to Blue Star Business Park Phase 2, which is a dependent subdivision, subdivision plan as well as special permits and site plan for a built for a 200-square-foot warehouse and 60,000-square-foot warehouse. So I know we've had some additional peer review comments come back since our last meeting. I'm not sure, Paul, if there was a specific kind of order presentation we were looking at here, but...
Well, I think we have Brandon go, and then we do have Francisco, who did the peer review for traffic, and we have a peer reviewer also for stormwater that you received this afternoon from Horsey-Wen.
Yes. I'll be honest, I haven't had time to do just that fully since, yes.
Date of time.
But, Brandon, please go ahead.
Good evening. Brandon Carr with DePree. So as the chair mentioned, we're here for both site plans for the back two buildings at Blue Star Business Park as long as, as long as the, and with the subdivision for the roadway. So I was just going to give an update on some of the changes we made and show a few kind of additional information that the board or the butters asked for at the last meeting. We did have, you know, we received the traffic peer review Monday. We reviewed, we've kind of, the traffic engineers formulated some responses that we'll be getting over to Paul in the peer reviewer. They asked for some emergency access turning plans, which we can provide, and some clarification on some of the, how the trips were generated, which we do have some more information tonight we can, we can discuss. And then we did get the stormwater review about an hour and a half, two hours ago. I did read it. I don't see anything in there that's, you know, insurmountable. Looks like we provided some more details, some further analysis on certain things, but we'll provide a full response to the board for all those items and get the, you know, any plan updates, additional calculations over to the Horsey-Wen for that. So if I can share my screen here.
You can.
Yep. So, I just wanted to kind of...
Just to confirm, Kevin, can you see the shared document?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to step through a few things. Some of it we covered last time, some of it, like I said, is in kind of response to what we talked about last time. So I just wanted to, you know, clarify the subdivision plan again. I think we kind of breeze through this kind of quickly last time, but just so everybody's clear. So we have the Leonard Street right away in the bottom left-hand corner. Our proposed right-of-way would come in off of Leonard Street here, curve up and around, and then further down to a cul-de-sac that, you know, on the site, when you see the site plan's ends, right, pretty much in front of Building 12. So we have the right-of-way, which has been lengthened about 400 feet. The previous cul-de-sac, when we worked before you for preliminary, was right about in this area here. And there's some questions on how Building 12 got its access, and it was a shared driveway, so we just cleaned that up by extending the road down further. So we'll end up with Lot 1 here, which will be on the left-hand side. This will be an undeveloped lot. This is pretty much entirely wetlands. Proposed Lot 2, which would be the Building 9, the Yale Building. Proposed Lot 4 on the right as you drive up the road. There's no site plan component of that yet, but in the overall development and in the meet for permitting, there was a building shown closer up to Leonard on that lot, but it's not included in any of these applications before you today. Then there'd be proposed Lot 3, which is kind of the back end of Phase 2, which would be the Building 12. And then over in this area, you can see, so this is the Janus Street right-of-way here that attaches to our lot here. There's two, well, there's one small lot here, Parcel A, which would be broken off, and that's just formalizes a lot with no development over there to buffer via butters there. And then there were questions when we were before you for the preliminary subdivision on this little leg that goes out to Burke Street. It's about 20 feet wide. It's pretty much entirely wetlands as well. There's really no access out to Burke Street, but we were just proposing a conservation easement over that section, just to formalize that, that there'd be no access to the Phase 2 from Burke Street, no development, you know, up in this area that would be reached by that little leg that goes out to Burke Street. So that's kind of just clarifying the subdivision, just wanted to review that again. And then kind of get into some of the site plan questions and clarify some things about the site plan. And then I know one of the, you know, main points of discussion was buffering the neighbors, and we added some additional detail there. So just to, you know, everybody's familiar with, I think, what we were proposing. Here's where the roadway comes in from Leonard Street, that's our right-of-way. Building 9, it's a 200,000-square-foot footprint building. Total square footage is right around 240,000 square feet. That includes a portion of the building that has a mezzanine for storage. It also has office space on the second floor. So the total kind of usable area for that is around 240,000. That's composed of 180,000 of retail, warehouse, 20,000, give or take, close to 30,000 of office, support staff, marketing. It's only, it's a two-shift operation. We have some breakdowns of employees that we can share. It's about 128 employees entirely across the two shifts. Let me just, I got a breakdown of that. But it's, there's some questions on, sorry, on that. I'll find that in a second, but, here we go. So that's 22, and this is, and again, this is combined both shifts. So there's 22 in the warehouse, 73 office workers, 10 retail workers, 17 drivers in box trucks, those are the delivery trucks we spoke about last time, and then there's the six van, those are the service technicians. Couple things to point out with that mix. Like I said, it's spread over two shifts. It's 128 total over two shifts. The retail component of the building is, it's not, it's by appointment only, so it's not like an open store. So it's by appointment only. They can control kind of the level of traffic and people coming in there, and it's really just for, to set up an appointment, to demo products, to look at them, and then hopefully, you know, order and things like that. And then the, there's some questions on the storage of the vans, the technician vans. Those are taken home by the employees at night, so it's not, they come in in their personal car, switch to the van, leave their car there all day, bring the van back just to get their car. So, you know, even though it's counted as kind of traffic related to that, some of those trips at the end of the day or beginning of the day might not occur. They might go right to an appointment, or they might go home right from an appointment. They're not coming back to the facility to get their car at the end of the day, is what I'm trying to, trying to stress. And there was, I might have said it by accident last time, or I don't know if it was, there's no call center. When I mentioned people answering the phones, it's just people calling for customers for it, typical office. You know, there's no dedicated call center where there's like, you know, high density of employees in Building 9. And just to point out, both buildings, and, you know, Building 12, like I said last time, 60,000 square foot, we're considering a warehouse for now, might have, you know, small support staff component, but it'd be similar to buildings like 4, 5, that type of use, high B warehouse, one or two tenants. We don't have a specific tenant for that yet. And just to point, you know, the both buildings, we are here for special permits for the size of the building and being in the wetland protection district, but they meet all zoning requirements for height, for setback, for coverages on the lots, both setbacks required by zoning to all lot lines as well as the 100-foot setback to residential use along the northern and eastern property lines. So that's kind of the site plan as a whole. This is that berm exhibit that we looked at last time, and just some tweaks we made since the last meeting. So kind of starting on the left-hand side around Yale, as you remember, we're proposing basically this, this green area here, this kind of medium green, I guess, on this graphic is the footprint of that berm that we've been talking about, and it's 10 to 12 feet vegetated berm with, in some areas with plantings on top. So this is, you know, like we talked about last time, we went out there, we walked the site a few times, we went out with a drone, really tried to find the areas that have, you know, less existing screening than other areas, and where the houses, you know, where you could see houses, and we really wanted to beef up those areas. So starting at this, this end, this would be out near Downing Drive, so you can see there's some residents. And those distances, just if you're looking at the plan, the blue distances are from the house to our building, to our proposed building, and the reds are from the house to the property line. And this kind of black, I should have colored it better, but this dash line here is that 100-foot setback that we're talking about. So in this area, it's kind of similar to two other spots, but the, like I said again, the light green here, this, you know, medium green is the footprint of the berm. This darker green that's on top of the berm, that's where we're proposing those additional screening plantings. Mixure of kind of evergreen, junipers, arborvitae, something, you know, deer-resistant, something that's going to grow in full, that we can kind of layer with each other. The top of that berm's eight feet wide, so we have enough room to get staggered, you know, two or three rows of vegetation to really kind of thicken that up. And, you know, arborvitae's can grow up to, you know, 30, 40 feet in the perfect conditions. We know at the top of a berm, they're exposed to wind, they're probably not going to grow that high, but, you know, assuming they get to 15, 20 feet in height on top of that 10 to 12 foot, you're looking at, you know, a 20 to 25 foot kind of screen there. We have some kind of imagery, perspective views of that, what that'll look like. And then this really dark green, kind of along the property line, that's just, at both ends of the berm, we kind of brought it into our property more, because when we walked in, when we looked at the survey closer, we noticed there's a lot of existing vegetation and taller trees on our property in those areas that we wanted to preserve. We didn't think it made sense to cut down trees to build a berm when these trees are, you know, some of them are 40, 50, 60 feet in height. And we have some kind of pictures, like I said, of that area. So then moving around towards Carlton Drive, this is another area where you can see the house off of Carlton Drive, we're proposing more screening plantings on the top. And around this area of our property, basically existing, it's cleared right to the property line on our side. So there's really no existing large vegetation on our property to save, this stuff off the site. We're not proposing to cut down any trees along the perimeter of that field, so anything that's there will stay, whether it's on, you know, our property or obviously if it's off-site. And then as you come down towards Janus Street, really taking a look at this area and kind of try to choke that, that entrance up. So again, this is an emergency-only entrance, so it would be gated about 20 feet wide. There's an existing connection to Janus Street there today. This was requested by the fire department, and also the water department asked that we loop our water main through this area, so that should be emergency connection and the connection into the water system in Janus Street. So you can see on the northern side of that Janus Street connection, the dark green against the property line, again, that's about a 40 to 50-foot thick area of existing trees that will remain. And then in this area, again, we're adding that, those plantings on top of the berm. On the southern side, doesn't, kind of got hidden by my drawing here, but this, again, dark green, we had, we had shown a berm over here previously, but then looking at it closer, there's a substantial grove of trees, and I'll show you some pictures in a second here, but that we were proposing to remain. So we know that lower berm that we talked about last time, the trees, you know, have the higher canopy, the berm and the plantings, the idea is to kind of fill in the understory more at, you know, ground level. Since we're no longer proposing that berm over here, we are proposing two 12-foot-high sound walls, look like something, and that'd be interior to our property. So there was one coming off the end of the building here, because there was some questions about noise, you know, with the daily activities over on this side of the building. And then since that berm was removed, we kind of staggered them here. And this, so this sound wall would come up, and it would connect into that. We're proposing a, you know, eight to 10-foot-high solid wood security gate. So on the northern side, that gate would kind of go maybe 20 feet past that entrance and key into those trees and that berm, come across, the gate would be there, and then connect into that sound wall. So it'd be a solid barrier, you know, 10 to 12 feet high along this entire piece here, and then with those existing trees. And we tried to keep the sound wall, get it up as far as we could, you know, to that access, so that there's no real direct line from, you know, where the vans would be to that, you know, that emergency exit. And then, so...
Where's Janus Street again to show me the entrance? I mean, the...
So the Janus Street cul-de-sac is right there.
I can't see it from here. Show me again, will ya?
It's right in the center of the screen. This is the cul-de-sac right in the center, right under that 274.
Right under there. So that's, okay, so my property is right above that, right in line.
So, just trying to get underneath this. So then I have some kind of images here. So this is some drones, so these are those, so this is Janus Street in the background here, cul-de-sacs right behind these trees here. That's, this is that existing vegetation that we moved the berm in to save, and then this on the right side of the photo is that existing vegetation on the southern side of the emergency exit that we proposing to remain a good portion of in Ogden with that sound wall. And then just another view from the other side. So this is hovering over the Janus Street cul-de-sac looking back into our site. So these trees that you see between, this is 7 Janus Street in the field, all this would remain, these trees on this side will remain. This out here would be where Building 12 is, Building 9 would be in this field here. So then there's a couple pictures from Janus Street itself, just showing again that vegetation. That's that existing cut-through that I mentioned. That's exactly where the emergency entrance will be, so it'll be similar kind of width, just with a gate across it now.
So Brandon, you're not expecting to like really widen what's, like, we were go up, you know, I've been down that street. So the existing width you see today is what you would maintain. You're not planning on widening it or doubling it or anything like that, right?
No, it's, the kind of path itself there is about 16, 18 feet, so there's really no widening of that to get to the 20 feet. It's just kind of, you know, from this tree to this tree is more than enough to get that. Might have to trim a little bit in here, but that would be, you know, reinforced with that gate and sound wall. So there's a couple more pictures showing that, you know, vegetation, all those trees that will remain. And then we just did a couple, had the architect drop in the berm, the fence, the sound wall in our proposed building on those same images. So this is on the, I guess it would be the southern side of Janus Street, looking back through that existing gap that we were just talking about. These, all these trees you see in this picture are the same existing trees that you saw in the last picture. So then there's that view. This is from the other side of Janus Street looking in. So on this one, if you zoom in on here, you can see that's the access road, that's that security fence I was talking about, wood panel fence, eight to 10 feet high. I think this is shown as eight feet high. And then behind it, you can kind of see, we should have made them...
Sir, I can't see.
I'm sorry, I just muted off of your camera.
I know you do, but you keep blocking the image. Every time you show some image, you stand right in front of it. It's not seeing.
Sir, if you'd like, you can move your chair in front of us, if that would help.
Sorry, no. I should have made them different colors, but that's, you can see that lower fence and then that back, kind of little bit different shade brown, that's that sound wall coming off the corner of the building that we showed before. So again, that's from the northern side of Janus Street, and then the last image here is from inside our site, so this is looking out towards that Janus Street. You can see where the, so this would be that loading area, this would be that last door on the, I guess that'd be the southern face of Building 9. That's the sound wall coming across it. This area here is the emergency access drive going around the building, and then you can see here going out to Janus Street. This is that, like the same gate you just saw in the last image to Janus Street. You can see the berm... You can see the berm here, kind of up to ten feet high to fill in the understory, and then the existing trees, again, these are all trees that are physically out there today. And then this is that, so you can see that fence comes in and that corner turns into that sound wall and comes down and wraps down towards building twelve.
Could you go back to the, to the overall site view, just to, as we see that, and just go back to the distances from the building to the houses and the, that one, yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, that, that last view was like basically standing...
Right there, yeah.
That building that you showed...
We're going to have a point for public questions and comments after the presentation.
So I can't make a comment?
Please wait until the public comment section of the meeting, sir.
Which is when?
He's getting his presentation, we're going to hear from some of the engineers who have peer reviewed this on the town's behalf, and then everybody here will have the opportunity to speak.
Agreeable.
If you've been at any of the planning board meetings for the last two years, do know how to operate a good ship.
That reflects our neighborhoods, we're here for that, okay?
Sir, you will have your opportunity to speak. Please be patient.
They're just saying the same things over and over, that's what you're doing. I mean, seriously, I want to know about this, this wasn't put, see the bottom there where the garbage is going to be, the, what do they call them, the containers? They weren't, you know, this is ridiculous. You know what's going to happen? You're going to do exactly what you want to do. And those trees you're talking about, those wonderful trees, most of them are scrub pines and they're awful. I'll be quiet now.
Thank you very much, have every opportunity to speak as long as you would like.
Really, and it doesn't do any good.
I'm disappointed to hear you say that, I look forward to hearing your comments shortly.
I just commented.
Okay, so Brandon, we're going to get copies of these so we can take a look and then post them online so everybody can...
Yeah, I'm going to send all this over to Paul as soon as the meeting's over.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any additional images that you were looking to show?
No, that's everything, I have a lot more pictures of the existing vegetation out there, a lot more drone shots of different, so if you want to see any other angles, we probably have one.
I know, we saw the work of the most dating of just trying to...
Yes, specific, but I don't have anything more specifically.
If you have any to submit that would kind of give us an idea of the type of trees that are there for, you know, seasonal density, that would be helpful. And any information that you have on the construction of that sound wall?
Yep.
Would be helpful in terms of like attenuations, height, things like that, that would also be helpful.
So I appreciate the renderings, I know that was my comment last time on the renderings to start to like, kind of see how all of the mitigation efforts you're looking to do kind of stack up against each other, so I definitely appreciate you guys taking a first pass at that and giving us at least a good idea of kind of, you know, how you're trying to move forward with these measures. So, thanks for listening.
Yeah, I think the open, open question that remains there is really like, in the dead of the winter, right, that's the challenge, that you can't really see in a rendering like this. So just something to consider how to represent that maybe for a seasonal attack.
Yeah, we can, you know, from being out there and from some of the existing photos...
We'll know in the next couple of weeks, right?
Yeah. I was out there a few weeks ago, so, you know, it was like, you know, obviously everything's green and fall and it's, you know, just the timing of the year, but, you know, we can get some more information, I've got my landscape part, take a look at all the trees out there and see maybe like what percentage is deciduous versus evergreen and, you know, and kind of, we can obviously see how it changes over the next few weeks too as well.
Brandon, I got one question for you, and I don't know if this can be done or if we can look at it. Can you go back to the overhead that shows the building, Janet Drive? So as you're coming down Janet Drive and you get into the driveway towards the building, do you think it's possible, you know, playing with the turning radiuses with the fiber, correct? Would there be a way to bring some screening down and then like come over at a forty-five when you enter the lot and like forty-five over? I'm trying to figure out a way to screen the building better.
Are you saying, kind of like in this area here?
I'm trying to think of a way to screen better when you're looking straight down Janet Drive. There seems to be a little bit of room to the left where, when you came in through the trees, I'm wondering if there's a way to, as you get into the trees to forty-five, correct, yeah. If you could, if you could cut that over and you bring...
That could be stabbing a little.
Yeah, if we could bring the berm down more and bring the screening down, I'm trying to think of a way to, when you're looking straight down Janet, to hide...
No visibility.
Yeah, and I didn't think of it until I was looking at it today. And it kind of shows on the other render, out the other rendering, can you go to the second rendering that you had? Next one. Yeah, so as we're coming into that driveway, if we could bring screening more to the left to screen the building more with a berm and whatever we can do. And if the driveway could say forty-five to the left, granted you got to play with the turning radiuses and whatever you have to do for the fire apparatus, but you got to get what I'm asking, is that, is it possible?
Yeah, I understand.
Is it possible?
I wonder if we could maybe even pull this off and get some screening on in-between this and the building, so maybe you're not...
Basically, the biggest thing would be standing Janet Drive, look straight down, can we be looking at some type of screening, some type of berm, trees, and still accomplish the driveway?
Paul, do you have something that you wanted to?
Yeah, this is a question too, Brandon, I'm talking with the fire department on that gate, they, they had mentioned, my conversations, that they wouldn't have an issue with the height of it, so I guess if there's an opportunity to increase that height, that could help further screen, that's something to explore.
We can look at that. I think what also, remember, the fire department's going, is going to use the roadway, this is only in an instance if that roadway was ever blocked and they can't get to the building.
Right.
So any sort of fire, fire apparatus or ambulance is going to use that whole driveway coming up, the main or roadway.
Right, right.
So hopefully there's never an incident where they have to use that. Brandon, what is the minimum width, what is the fire department looking for?
They ask for twenty feet.
Twenty feet, yeah.
Okay, members of the board have questions for content at this time, otherwise, move to the peer review on the, on the, I think the traffic.
You're just asking the planning board, I'm pretty sure.
Sorry?
At this point, you're just asking the planning board.
Yeah, we're going to go through kind of, we have the applicant here, and we have some peer review for transportation and traffic, as well as peer review for stormwater, for all the things that we've already kind of read outside of the meeting, we want to hear, hear kind of from the experts, and then we'll put it up for everybody else who's here. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening everyone. My name is Francisco Olivera, I'm a transportation engineer with McMahon Associates, with offices in downtown in Lincoln, Rhode Island. We did perform a peer review of transportation materials that were available to us, including the transportation generation memo that was produced by the applicant modifying, showing the modifications that are proposed under the phase two, as well as some of the plans that were provided. We have a couple of comments on the general information that was provided. One of them is referring to the proposed uses on building nine, according to the sheet six of the, of twenty-three on the package that was provided, there is a small section of that building that is noted as retail, and when we compared that with the land use that was described on the trip generation memo, there was no indication for retail. So we are asking the applicant, we, our suggestion is the applicant to clarify that discrepancy. We reviewed the trip generation that was provided on the memorandum, and we concur with the discrepancy. If we actually develop a trip generation for the, assuming that a slightly difference on retail would be applicable on the site. And the analysis, the trip generation that we produced to be conservative, we did not remove any pass by trips or any internal capture. If someone is coming to one of these warehouses but wants to do some business on the proposed retail, normally you can remove that trip, we didn't do that. And our calculations, the number of trips that we expected to be generated by the modified size is still under what was approved on the MIPA in 2018. So we generally agree with the conclusions of the applicant that the traffic impacts to the roadway network would be lesser than what was already approved in 2018. We did not have an ability to review the internal side circulation as we didn't have a CAD file, so we're asking for the applicant to do that or provide us with the CAD file so we can review that. There is another element that was of a slight concern to us, and the plan that was shown by the applicant a few minutes ago, that circle that provides, provides access between buildings nine and twelve, it is unclear how the traffic control would be. Normally you would have either yield control, subcontrol, and it wasn't clear on that. It's a minor detail, it would help to prevent any potential crashes internal to the site. But in order that, that is our general, the summary of the, of the review that we did of the materials that were provided to us, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to get too into the weeds with you here, so I apologize in advance. I noticed that in your letter, you had data from the ninth edition IT manual as well as the tenth edition IT manual. Everything that you looked at was specific to this building only, correct?
We looked into what was produced before and what the revisions are based on the phase two and plans that were provided, that's why we indicate all the different buildings that have been approved, as well as the changes that are considered on the phase two.
But ju-just for these buildings, there wasn't, you didn't do a review of the overall park and kind of update those numbers from edition nine to edition ten?
No, no, not under this review, that was done for the board, the time when McMahon did a review a few years ago.
But that was, that was still the ninth one, right?
Yeah, we, we was between the nine and the ten, there was a discrepancy between those, that information that was provided. And the applicant, if I remember correctly, the applicant provided numbers with the tenth edition.
Right, so the, the ninth edition was based off the MIPA approval, which was done back in, I think in 2018, whatever that was, that was for full buildup, phase one and phase two, and for the various uses that came through. Then, what happened is, is the, the numbers were amended based on square footage reduction when building five was reduced and building seven was reduced, and also the retail of building three was eliminated, which became the parking lot. So those square footages have been properly included in the analysis, and then, as you correctly reviewed, there's analysis based on edition nine and edition ten. So, edition nine, when MIPA approved this, it was over about sixty-five hundred trips per day, edition ten is far less than even that was approved for.
And these are all under the, again, I'm getting the weeds here, the warehousing IT use code. I guess, I'm not sure this is a question for you or a question for McMahon, but in terms of, specifically in terms of kind of the uses that have gone into the existing buildings with Pitney Bowes and other things, is, do we, I know that with, I don't know how I got here, but in an IT, like, printout or something a couple of years, a year or so ago, I think I saw that there was a high parcel hub warehouse, and that seemed to be kind of the last mile, lots of box truck.
This is Francisco's specialty, so I'm sure he can chime in, but there is, there was something that was added, which is called the high cube warehouse, when they were not analyzing hold shorts, transload, cross dock, in fulfillment centers. So they came out with a model that was for that. The high cube centers analysis is only for buildings greater than 200,000 square feet. So building four doesn't fall in that, it's 125, building seven is 100,000 square feet, doesn't fall in that. So the only analysis that was done, high cube could be used for the Yale appliance building and building nine, however, when you go through the uses of what they do, they're straight warehousing, they're, they don't have the automated sortation, the sophisticated level of their, you know, high-rise machinery and all that kind of stuff. So they're very base building, the inventory sits there, and that's why it was determined that the traditional warehouse should be used. And what was also in the analysis, and we're going to respond back to Francisco's peer letter, that going through it, the analysis that we're coming back with shows the wholesale showroom, the retail showroom of Yale as full retail as shopping center. So that would be the same number as someone going into a Target versus someone going into by appointment at Yale Appliance. So there's a big difference in numbers, but in order to present it, we have to use the shopping center because that's all we can go by.
And you're definitely have the thumb on the scale with that one, but it doesn't make a difference necessarily, so to speak. But yeah, in terms of the 200,000 square foot minimum for that, I think was something that I had missed in that review, so thank you. I think kind of the difference between big warehouse, big trucks, and Amazon warehouse with lots of little trucks going in and out, in and out, obviously the trip generation is different, so.
That is correct, and if I may add, there, there are four land use codes that IT identifies, one fifty warehouse and one fifty-one mini warehouse, one fifty-four the high cube transload, and one fifty-six. One fifty-six is still very iffy, there's only three studies that were performed, the data that can come up is, is not necessarily something that we in the industry would rely on. For the three other warehouse land use codes, we actually looked, did a small exercise to confirm the, the number of trips that we generated, land use code one fifty is actually more conservative than the land use code fifty-one and fifty-four, one fifty-one and one fifty-four. The number of trips that would be generated with those other land use codes would be less conservative, so the numbers that were presented were on the conservative side as well.
And by conservative, you mean higher trip generation than you would...
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I knew I was going to get into the weeds there, so thank you, thank you for your assistance. And members of the board have questions for McMahon Traffic Generation, or, obviously the applicant has said that they're going to have, go back and forth a little bit, but...
Right.
Okay. There's nothing else, I guess, Francisco, you're, you're all set. And then we do have, we said you had to be at a peer review for stormwater as well, Paul?
Yeah, we have Steve Standish from Park, Porserly Witten, who's on...
Who's here remotely here. You are muted, sir, so I won't ramble for a second while you get yourself ready. And just so, I know we, I know most of the members of the board have not had an opportunity to read this in terrible detail, so we may have additional questions for you coming out of the meeting in, in the future.
Of course, good evening everyone, my name is, can you hear me?
We're good, yeah. All set.
Good evening everyone, my name is Steve Standish, I am with Porserly Witten. We were, we were tasked with conducting the stormer review for the site. The applicant has proposed two more buildings on site, and they have presented our results. As part of this, the applicant has also proposed a number of best management practices for mitigation stormer on site, which include keeps up catch basins, seven corvettes, sand filters, as well as a number of infiltration pods and pond column lessons. Porserly Witten has reviewed the stormer report, the site plans, origin control, as well as a number of other items in regard to the Massachusetts Stormer Handbook, and making sure that they're complying with all the standards with that handbook. Overall, we submitted this initial letter today to the planning board. There are a number of comments for this project, the majority of them are based in clarifications for different components of the, the site itself, and requesting additional information that some of these items are based on. Without getting too much into it, that's, the applicant said they had scanned over the initial letter and they have given the same conclusion, as they had mentioned. The only major concern that I would like to bring up based on this stormer, this stormer review that we did, would be their general design regarding their soil test pits. The soils on site are really good for infiltration, as the test pits had shown. The applicant has assumed a higher infiltration rate than is typically normal for these kind of test pits, and there are some items, there are some types of soil within the test pits that make it a little harder to justify without additional testing. With that, without being too far into the week, we just wanted clarification on that, and that is a major design component. and that is a major design component to justify as part of this. That's the primary concern. And other than that, the routing and everything like that that's on site is looking very good. The water quality that is coming out is 40s of best management practices is considered very good, so.
So just to reiterate your core kind of question or clarification needed at this point from a stormwater perspective would be that if the infiltration rates from the soils are a little bit off, then you have to kind of trace that all the way back up and redo all of your, everything that feeds off of those numbers?
Correct. The soil on site are classified as A soils for infiltration, according to raw rates, it's a rate of infiltration that's huge. There are two types for A type of soil. A soil is classified as sand and loamy sand. There are two infiltration rates. One is a little bit higher than another, and typically with that higher rate, it's justified with permeability testing. We did not receive permeability testing as part of this report and this submission, and we've just need justification for using that higher rate.
Understood. And Brad, did you want to say anything, or do you want to?
I was going to say, that was reading through it, obviously that was kind of more attention grabbing comment, so we'll provide some further detail, and if we need to do more testing out there, we can do more testing and work with Horsey Witten to either justify that rate or adjust things if we need to use a lesser rate or, you know, whatever we have to do. But yeah, we'll operate on that one, and that's the one we're going to focus on first.
I was fixing that one before you touch anything else. Okay. Okay. Do members of the board have any specific questions for Horsey Witten as it relates to stormwater? I know we all haven't had a chance to dive into this in too much detail.
So I just want to make the comment again, Paul, that Horsey Witten's working with the planning board and the conservation commission so that the two boards are going to work hand in hand with the same peer reviewer in order to provide the applicant the correct direction, so we're not stepping on each other's toes but hearing the same story.
Right. And as they're transitioning to a new conservation director, they've, my understanding, this has been, had been continued, so the new conservation director starts October 12th. So, but we're working to make sure that we're using the same consultant, the same peer reviewer.
They're going to have an onboarding process, aren't they?
They're going to be busy.
Okay.
They will be busy.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think, again, we may have additional questions for you in follow-up as we have a chance to dig into the materials a little bit more, and we'll send all of those through Paul since he can probably weed out any of the idiot questions that we might ask. Okay?
Sounds great.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to just open this up for members of the public who would like to speak. Again, if you'd like to, please come up to the podium, and please address your comments to myself and the board. We're not going to get into asking applicants and turning this into a cross-examination. Make your comments. We'll take down any questions that you have, and we'll either answer them directly or we'll refer to the applicant or one of the peer review engineers that's here with us for that. So if the first person, don't even make this super kind of formal line here, but podium's right here. And when you get to the podium, please just say your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Steve Novick, 2 Janet Street. And I was here at the last meeting, wanted to continue some of the questions that I keep on hearing. I guess to start off, I want to direct these to the planning board, okay? You're all elected officials, is that correct?
Yes.
And the goal is, make sure I got this right, the goal and objective is to support the town in making smart growth decisions and to support town residents. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, good. And this is not a question that I want any answer on, but I just want you to realize the sensitivity it is to the people that are immediately impacted by this, okay? And maybe it's fair, maybe it's not fair to say, if you lived on Downing Drive or if you lived on Janet Street, you may have a lot of reservations, but having a structure of this size put in there. I think when the land got moved over, changed from agriculture to commercial, I don't think anyone envisioned in the town when they agreed to that, that we were going to have structures this large. I mean, you have that in Mansfield, you have that in Taunton, but those developments, those industrial developments are void of residential property, as best I can tell. I drove through both of them just to clear my mind that that's the case, and I don't see any homes at all anywhere near that. This is different now. You know, the town voted to have this come through, and it looked like the objective was to increase our tax base. I also see in the paper that the Chronicle did an article that there was a million plus or something, and rebates and everything to the developers or to the companies that come in. I don't know the exact numbers, I don't need to know the exact numbers, but that hits a little on the fact of why we wanted to have a development here was to increase the tax base, give the community a more chance to do other things. So with that in mind, we've got a number of people, a lot of them that aren't here, I don't know why, but they live inside of these buildings. They're huge buildings. I was in one of the buildings in the Mansfield Industrial Park, and that was only 150,000 square feet, and it was only 36 feet high. That's still smaller than what we've got here, and that was huge. I mean, in Mansfield, it's all set back and, you know, there's no issue with residents anywhere near it. I'm trying to figure out how, we try to proceed here. I'm not against development at all. I think it's great, and I think it's, it can be done correctly, but how do we do it to ensure the integrity of those that are living close by, okay? A lot of them, as I said last time, have been in those houses for 50 years, and it wasn't the reverse that there was commercial property or industrial property, and they decided that they were going to build a house there, and they were not happy that they built a house there. It's just the opposite. 50 years of having residential property, and now you've got structures that regardless of what you do with the berm, regardless of what you do with vegetation, you're not going to mask 46 feet or whatever the exact height is of these buildings are. And there is a thing called winter, and the leaves are all gone except, you know, if it's evergreen. So where do we go from here to have something that's of comfort and that this board is looking to support the community or the people that are living close by? And think of it as if it was your street, your house, that we can feel comfortable that the board is being supportive and trying to balance this. It's hard with buildings this big, and I think there's a level of fairness here in the way it came about, that the residents, again, that live close by need to feel that the board is supporting them and making sure that if the buildings are this large, they're being set back as far back as possible, that they're not going to reduce the value of the properties, that people are not feeling that they're driving down the street that's sort of half-commercialized now because of these structures. It's not an easy task, I realize that, but you were all elected here to support the town in making sure that things were done that would be done in a way that there was comfort with the people that have been here for 50-plus years, okay? So I've heard a number of things, I heard some more today, or tonight that look interesting, that somebody had said doing a 45-degree angle coming in or off of the cul-de-sac, that that way visually you're not seeing it. Putting up a structure that's high enough, it doesn't look like a commercial structure so that visually you're not driving down the street, and all of a sudden, you know, you've got this huge building. Also, you know, I don't know if you want to put the, one of the slides back up, one of the earlier slides, you still have a commercial operation after hours going on there, as best I can tell. You've got your, part of your loading docks are all in line with the direction of the street. I don't see, and it's easy for me to say, but can't that, the building be oriented a little bit different? And I think that was proposed by a couple other residents, that you don't have that noise, that visual that the loading docks and the dumpsters all provide. I don't know if the building can be skewed a little off. I know when I asked last time why the building's going to be pushed back farther, I was told that the, I don't know if it's not the soils that won't support it, or if it's in a designated wetland area, but I saw where the road is that comes across these two buildings. Is it possible to go with, working with the conservation commission and trying to get that road extended inwards a little bit more so that the buildings have an opportunity to go back 30, 40 feet or something? I don't know. I don't know enough about the soils that are there, and I don't know what, just because you have a designation that it's a wetland, as you all know, things can be done, and you can make modifications to what goes in there as long as you can justify how it's been done and why it's been done. Just because it's initially designated as a wetland doesn't stop it from possibly happening if you can compromise in how you move back the road, is an example. I don't know. I can go on and on here, but I want to let other people have an opportunity to talk. But you have to look at this as if it was any one of you living on that street, and it's, there's no one here that has definitely, any resident that I've seen, that has said, no, we absolutely don't want it. I think the people that you've talked to have said, yeah, let's just make sure though that we're getting some consideration out of this. And that's what this board is all about, is to balance how it works. And again, this is not commercial property that residents moved into, okay? That's the big kicker here. It's the opposite way, and if there were smaller buildings, it would be easier to deal with. But, you know, maybe the, what they're looking for now is all huge buildings, but if it is, let's have some compensation for how they're not butted right up against the residential properties. I'll stop there so I can let others talk, but I would just like to hear from the board, and I know you're all working toward it, I know it isn't easy, I've done similar type of work in my career, but you've got to try to come to a balance here and try to be a little bit more supportive to make the neighborhood a little bit more comfortable, okay? Is that fair?
Thank you, Mr. Novick.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the things that, go ahead. I think it's state your name and address for the record, please.
John Curtin, 7 Janet Street. First thing I wanted to go over was, I put together a petition, and what it is, is that some of the neighbors, they're not able to come, they have small kids, the hours that they work, obviously, there's people that are not able to come. Some of the people that are here are a little bit older, some of the kids are a little bit older off to school, that's why we're able to be here. So I, you know, after discussing with some different people, I came up to, I think the most appropriate thing was to do was to speak to the neighbors myself and have them sign a petition so that you guys have the opportunity, or Condyne has the opportunity to speak with them and has the opportunity to get what their intake on that as well is. Every person that I spoke with, with the exception of one person that we'll discuss at a more appropriate time, signed this. This is all the residents that it affects, and it shows, this is what we want. This is, you know, I'm just going to read it real briefly, and it says, this is a petition to the Norton Planning Board. It's a petition to substantially move and/or shift building, proposed building number nine by Condyne Corporation away from 7 Janet Street and all Janet Street. This includes the reduction in size of proposed building number nine, as well as a dividing of proposed building nine as reasonable alternatives to address the adverse effects presented by proposed building nine's current projected position. If this building cannot be shifted, cannot be moved, then the adverse effects that have been shown are clear and present. Something has to be done. Then the building has to be made smaller, or the building has to be divided and maybe can be shifted into a different area. I don't know if it's possible, but the other piece of land where the other building doesn't have a leasing yet, maybe it's possible that part of this building could be divided and the other part of the building could be put there, just an example. I think one of the things that is a little bit hard to take in is that we're looking at alternatives, and from Condyne's perspective, in terms of the exact positioning of this building, that's nothing that's changed. We hear about trees, we hear about fences, we hear about things, and even if the building is or isn't pushed back, those things are all necessary anyway. They're all necessary anyway. It's not addressing the main point of that this building absolutely affects all of us in this neighborhood. It clear and does. And again, like Steve said, this is why we have a board. This is why we have a board to protect us, and like you said, I couldn't have said any better if you're all in the same exact positioning. I have no problem with Condyne, I have no problem with the having bigger business in the town. This is absolutely like Steve said about fairness, and we just want reasonability. It's far too close to my house, it's far too close to this entire neighborhood, and this is the, these are the neighbors, this is their voice, this is what they said. These gentlemen are right here, they're not even paying attention. This is, I said at the last meeting, they're disassociated with the residents of this area, disassociated. These people that I have highlighted, I'm going to pass this to the board so everybody can see it, affects all of them from a view, from a value perspective, and this is their voice, this is what they want, this is their names that are all here, and the bottom line is that we're relying on you guys to do what you guys' job is. And everybody else that I spoke with, this is, this is what we need to be done as far as adjustments to be made, and not talking about just trees and talking about fences. The building has to be either made smaller, needs to be shifted, needs to be cut and cut, divided, or whatever it is. And until we really start hearing things, anything different than that, then it's really not getting anywhere. The adverse effects are clear, absolute, and they're not going anywhere with the size of this building, and so that's where I stand on this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Currie. If you could pass that to the chair, Paul, you could put this in bottom line.
I just have one other last thing, I have one question though, too. Has Yale, in terms of, have they been asked if they're willing to make any adjustments in terms of the building? I mean, this is such a major thing for us in the neighborhood, I think it's a very, very relevant question and would solve an awful lot of problems. I mean, I think that's a very, it's a very fair thing to ask in terms of, if Yale was able to make a few adjustments in terms of the size of it, in terms of the design of it, if they're open to that, I think it's a reasonable question to ask Yale, and I think that it deserves an answer.
I think that, I think that that has been heard loud and clear.
Sure. Has it been answered, though?
I'm going to get there.
Okay.
So as a board, I think our position is that we can only, it's not our job to design a building for an end user. Members of the Condyne team are here, they're listening. If they choose to submit a different plan than what we have in front of us, then we'll look at that plan.
I understand.
If they choose to move forward with this plan, then this board is under the obligation to vote on this plan as it sits.
Sure.
Whether that is in favor of it or against it.
Sure.
And the Condyne team and... And the Condyne team and their constituents need to understand that as well.
Sure.
So if members of the board are not in favor of the building as is, then we vote against it, then we vote against it. And they have to, then they have to deal with their constituent in that respect.
Just to get that point across, though, there's not a doubt about it. Even the pictures that they showed, and part of their job is to show something that's going to look good. The picture that you got that they even showed of looking down the street, it's terrible. It's a blatant and obvious example of an adverse effect they're showing us ahead of time. It can't be happening. And if it does happen, you guys have a job to do.
Can I just have one question? Is it only the board that's going to vote to see if it's a yes or a no on this building? I mean, did I just hear that, or was I not hearing it right?
So, if you want to come up and please come to the podium.
No, just going to say it from here, that's the only thing.
No, I'd like, if you're going to ask a question, please come up and state your name for the record, please.
Okay. First of all, how many people are going to vote whether this is going to be yes or no?
So, so this board is the special permit granting authority.
Okay.
So our votes from the five members here and the two that are attending remotely this evening are the special permit issue granting authority for that portion. This project is also going through the Conservation Commission for their, for the pieces of the puzzle that follow their jurisdiction as well.
Okay.
But those two boards together are the ones, at this point, making those decisions, yes.
Okay, so if the board is, like you said, going to vote, and you vote yes, and you have 50 other people saying no, we don't have a, we can't do anything, can we?
We are here to listen to comments.
We are.
We are here to represent all of the people in town, that is what we are elected to do as the planning board.
Yes, I heard it's going to, I understand, and I understand all of this, I mean, really. My house is the one that's butting right up against, you know that. And I don't know who came down the street, you said you walked down the street, you should have stopped in. But the thing is, those trees, they're not that great. They're all a lot of scrub pines, okay? They need to either come down or whatever. And how many years is it going to take for the trees to grow? It's just not right. Like Steve said, we have been there for, I've been there for 43, going on 43 years. I like my house, okay? I really don't want to move, but I don't want to have all this noise and the compactor they just added recently, that wasn't, that wasn't on the original, and the original wasn't a 40-foot building. I understand they want to build, why can't they just build it further in the field? I mean, we're talking about money here, that's all we're talking about is money. And it's not money for the town, and it's certainly not going to my pocket, because my taxes haven't changed, or anybody else's yet. They're still the same. I don't understand. You know, find another place, move another place, really. Or move the building further back, right? And I just, you know, and if you guys have the yes or no, that just doesn't.
You want to move into a residential area, you've got to take residential things into account, and they're not doing it.
Yeah. And we're not going to let you, we're just going to fight it. And I mean, I don't know, right now, if there's any chance at all this can be changed, because I don't think so, seriously. We just keep coming and listening to the same things over and over. And like you say, there were trees today, and burrs, and whatever. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Move the bloody building, move it further back. If Condyne doesn't want to go with it, not Condyne, whoever's going to buy the building, doesn't go with it, then find some other place. But I know the town wants the money, okay? That's what the town wants, it's all for the money. And I know one of my neighbors, I think, was approached with a deal, sort of. I can't say, but how can that happen?
Is the board aware of that?
Is the board aware that somebody was approached with money?
I'm not personally aware of that.
Not aware of that? Okay. Well, somebody was approached with money, I heard from Condyne, that was, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but we were told that by that person, and because, I guess, they don't fight this, they're not going to fight this.
It's, I'm not, I'm not personally aware of that. At the same time, it's not my business to understand what two private parties do.
Ask Condyne.
Well, I guess it's legal. I guess it's legal, we check with a lawyer. And I guess it can be legal. But why should somebody who is...
Ma'am, ask the board to ask Condyne about it.
Well, I don't know if they want to, well, it's legal.
Ask the board if they're aware.
Yes, are you aware that Condyne approached somebody with a money issue?
I am not personally aware of that.
And then ask the board to comment, ask the Condyne about it.
Sir?
John, that's my son.
If you would like to come up and ask, if you, no, she's at the podium now. So if you would like to come up personally and ask some additional questions, you're certainly welcome.
We're just saying right now is, why would they do that? So that they're not fighting it because they are close to this problem?
Okay, that's good.
It's not good. It's just not good. It's like you're butting one neighbor against another. And, I mean, I mind my own business, I have, you know, you've been living there a long time, and people have come and gone, and whatever. Mind your own business because that's the way life is. When you have small children, you interact. My children are all gone. But you offer somebody money to keep their mouth shut is wrong, even though it's legal, because we've talked to a lawyer about that. Okay, that's all I have to say. I mean, if I sell my property now, I'd probably get a good price. But once your building goes up, what's going to happen?
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're very welcome.
Paul, I see we have a hand up here from a member of the board, so Mr. Curt, just one moment. Steve, I see you have your hand up here, if you'd like to add anything additional.
Yeah.
Come on camera.
I'll just tag on to that.
Sorry?
Oh, okay, sorry. No, I just wanted to tag on to that. I neither agree nor disagree with what she had said about Condyne approaching a unit, but that's, unfortunately, that's not in the purview.
It's not what?
He said that.
It's not in our purview.
So, thank you, I think, one of the, one of the comments that she raised was talking about moving the building, and I know we touched on this a little bit. I was, if you'd like, I was going to ask Brandon if you could pull up the wetland map, if you would be okay with him reviewing that again? Would that be fine?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to review the building layout in regards to the wetlands, and what is regarded as kind of the town's no-touch zone, so to speak, in terms of what that, where that is on the site, and from a state perspective and a conservation perspective, what you are and are not allowed to do in different areas of that site.
Yes, so just to get everybody acclimated, I've got a plan that shows it better, but basically, this right here, this dimension, from this point towards Janet Street, so this one here is kind of the main site constraint with this building. So, this reading plan pretty much shows it the best, so it's a little different orientation, but you can see Janet Street would be kind of off-screen, top right would be the cul-de-sac.
We've turned the building essentially 90 degrees counterclockwise.
Correct, yeah. So this area right here, so you can see this line down here.
Is that the blue?
Yes, the screen's about three seconds behind my laptop, so it's kind of like, I look up there and it hasn't changed yet. But this, let's see if I can actually just draw it on it. So this line here, with the little triangles on it, that's the edge of the wetland. So then the town has, so this area here is kind of the roadway that's closest to the wetland, so that, the town has a 25-foot no-touch, where you can't do any work within. And that's basically right there, is what I just traced. This heavy dashed black line, that's our limit of work. So you can see our limit of work is basically right up against that 25-foot. Then you have an area for just rating down for your shoulder to fit, and then a minimum, so kind of working, this zooming even more, kind of work our way up. This dimension here, that's a minimum set by the standard for a right-of-way, I believe it's 40 or 50 feet. Then there's a minimum town standard for a landscaping strip up against a right-of-way. And then as you kind of, so as you get towards the building more, this overall dimension is basically set by industry standards of what trucks need to come in, because, you know, it looks, it looks like a large area now, but if you have trucks parked up against the building, obviously you have to come in and maneuver around them. That dimension, it's about 140 feet, I believe, 160 feet, I think, is kind of industry standard from the wall to kind of your limit of pavement, and that's just for maneuverability in trucks. So that, all those are kind of minimum, either regulatory or industry standards. So that kind of sets this edge of the building. And then, just to go back to the wider view, the building shape and programming and length and size is really determined by the landlord and set for what they want to accomplish here. So I haven't, you know, don't want to talk for Condyne, but talking to Yale, this is what they say they need, this is kind of, you know, they come with a list of what they need to operate, what they have in mind here, and that's, that's what sets this kind of program of the building. So you can see that area right here is what kind of drives the placement of this building, so then you have the width of the building, and that's, you know, obviously where we're up against that setback here. You know, we talk about how we're not looking at other alternatives, I mean, we're pretty, you know, we're in the design process now, we've looked at a ton of different site planning, you know, different options early on in the process with Yale, and what fits on this site, and, you know, could they, you know, previously, you know, could you have three buildings, could you have two buildings, could you have a different shaped building, an L building? And this is what, you know, they're asking for here. And, you know, we felt, we don't come into these to say, how can we put the building as close as possible to the neighbors? We work from, you know, the standards given by the tenant, the standards given by the town, the state, industry standards, and try to, you know, fit it in there best we can. So that's kind of how the site plan evolved. Like I said, it's really driven by the way this wetland comes in here, and that's, you know, in this, so it's a wetland in an area of critical concern with flood plain, so any pushing into that wetland is basically a no-go with the conservation or with the state.
Understood.
So any specific questions to that?
I think it was good just to review that, and I think that I just wanted to make sure that we went through that again, kind of after hearing the comments from members of the public in terms of can the building be moved, and just to restate that.
So, Joe, just two quick questions maybe for completeness of the discussion. Could you describe what the face of the building looks like? Like, is it truck base, is it glass? And then what does the back of it look like?
So I actually...
And what's the, is there alternative consideration by swapping, physically rotating the building, so parking and drive on the back, building pushed up against the wetland?
So, and I have a rendering of the front face of the building. So we position the building this way to keep all that activity away from the neighbors towards the wetland, and basically let that building serve as a sound barrier.
So the trade-off in that design discussion really is a trade-off of like activity, noise versus proximity, right?
Yeah, so I mean, this building is, what is it, 160 feet or 200 feet wide, 250 feet wide, plus at that minimum 100-foot barrier. I mean, the trucks, we're keeping the truck activity, you know, 400 feet from, 500 feet from neighboring houses on the other side of, you know, a building. I think a good example, we had a neighborhood meeting back in July, June, July, at building four, which is out there, which is the same, it's a shorter version, it's kind of a shorter version of this building. Same depth, same kind of construction. And it's a good kind of test case if you go out there today. So the way that building's oriented, the back and the loading face is 495, so if you go on the 495 side, you can hear 495. Or even standing in the building, we have doors open at one point, you know, you can hear the highway. You get on the other side of that building, on the Leonard Street side, you stand in front of that building, you can't hear the highway. I mean, you can hear it, but it's, you know, a lot less. So that's kind of, you know, an example of keeping that truck traffic, keeping that roadway, keeping that activity on that side of the building away from the neighbors. If we were to flip that, all that noise would be, you know, funneling towards the neighbors instead of funneling towards the wetland. I do have...
Thank you.
I think I have, I think I showed this last time, that's the lighting. I think one of these drawings has a image of the, the face of the building, might not have it. Yeah, there you go. So that's the front face of the building facing the Leonard Street extension. So the front face has, you can see on the right side, the truck loading docks, on the left side, kind of closer to the picture, that's that main entry on the left side. So that's where that retail and that second-story component would be, the back of the building. I don't think I have it, maybe you do? Kind of that's back from, so that's a view from the cul-de-sac, so you can see the truck bays on that in the southern exposure. This is before modeling the berm and those plantings and sound fence and everything, these are kind of outdated at this point. Another view of just the main entry, interior space. I'm not sure if there's a picture of the back, but if you look at the site plan, the back is just solid wall, it's, you know, if you look at the buildings out there today, kind of like, look at the ends. Some windows up high to let light in, but there's only, there's three man doors on the back, and that's just driven by emergency exits. So there's no lighting on the back. The only lighting would be just emergency lighting over those doors. So you can see there's all, you know, one, one about halfway down, and then one down here. And like, again, those are just emergency exit.
And then, Brandon, let's see hours of operation again? I know you said this last question.
Two shifts, three shifts from six, starting around six to 6:00 P.M.
So 6:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M.?
Yeah.
And I believe that the deliveries happen, you know, eight to five, kind of the ends of those shifts. They said there'd be just, you know, minimal warehouse staff, kind of. Showroom is tighter window than that.
Yeah, more like, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did you have anything further, Scott?
No, Melissa, thank you.
Yeah, I think, thank you for speaking to the considerations that you had in terms of site planning and review, looking at other alternatives, but I think Brandon and Jeff, as we mentioned last time, kind of, we have to look at this building as, the hours of operation for Yale are great, but we have to look at it from 24 hours, kind of, Yale, we want Yale to be here forever. But things change, and we have to kind of look at it from that perspective as well as from kind of the quote-unquote worst-case scenario in that perspective. Mr. Curt, I think you were looking to...
Let the other neighbors go first, and then go.
I have a question, it's a comment. So, Donna Andreasen, 5 Janet Street. I just want to say, you know, if you watch any real estate show, it's a location, location, location. So you buy your house, if you buy on Burt Street, Main Street, you pay a certain price. Buy a house in a residential area on a cul-de-sac, you pay more. So we've done peer reviews on stormwater, we've done peer reviews on traffic. Anybody done a peer review on the effect of our home values? And people who maybe just bought in the area, and how they may end up being upside down in their mortgage, because their house is not going to be valued at what it's valued at when they bought it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we do have additional members here who are going to speak, we do have some additional comments that have come in virtually, so I'm just going to let the town planner read those into the record for us to respond to. So Paul, if you could do that.
Okay, thank you. This letter was provided by Frank Bettencourt, who's in Abutter on Janet Street. He's not, he was out of town, so he asked me to read this into the record. It's a short letter. My name is Frank Bettencourt, 10 Janet Street in Abutter to Phase, Blue Star Phase Two. Due to a prior commitment, I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting of the planning board, therefore I would request that you read this letter into the minutes of the October 5th meeting. I spoke at the May 25th planning board meeting and took the opportunity to remind the board that Phase Two would require more sensitivity in respect to Abutter concerns during this phase. Aside from the statement on Conservation Commission requirements... Aside from the statement on Conservation Commission requirements, I would like to fully understand any strategies that have been taken to consider the possibility of moving Building Nine away from the end of Janet Street in order to minimize impacts to Abutters. It would be greatly appreciated that Condyne provide an explanation as to each potential alternative that was reviewed and why each of these potential alternatives were rejected. Thank you for reading this into the minutes. Frank Bettencourt.
Thank you, Paul. I think we had one additional comment come in, you had mentioned from an additional member of the public.
Right, and again, it fits Orin, and I-
Orin Siegel.
Orin Siegel, who's on the call, so I prefer I can read it.
Yeah, unless, Orin, you would like to speak on the call, otherwise we'll take silence over the next few seconds as Paul go ahead.
No, I'll be happy to. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can, Orin, thank you.
Yeah, I just have some questions going back. First time the board of the building has been 240,000 square feet. I was wondering how that required calculations to affect Building Nine? That the office space and mezzanine area need to be calculated in regard with the tables provided for, we could be updated to 24, 200, 240,000 square feet? I give them, I've written out some calculations that I just give on the back of the number of, but warehouse space of 180,000 square feet, one per 3,000 comes to 80, retail comes to 6350. And I don't know whether the office and mezzanine will be treated as office and mezzanine, which is one per 5,000, or will be treated as warehouse space. But in any case, the parking department comes up to 380 or 300, whatever the case may be. The board can reduce that, of course, but at least, I want to make sure we're on the same page with what that number is. The other question I had was on the church generations. All church generations provided seem to be based solely on their footage. I know that's the IT standard. My question is, how can underground realities be taken into account? I mean, that's a standard, we may use it, and that's, that's fine to try and do a calculation when you don't have information. But, but in this case, they're not taking into account, we reduced the square footage, but we increased the parking, which is indicative of increasing the amount of traffic that's going in and out of the site. So it doesn't make much sense to just disregard that, the transfer from footage to parking. It doesn't take into account truck traffic, and it doesn't take into account the last-mile facilities, which in the case of Building Nine, Seven, from what I understood, they have a fleet of 70 vans going in twice a day. By way of example, Table One, the 1982 Neaples table, and Table Two, the 2021 table, talks about the AM peak entering the park at 48 and 30, which is, which is, really understates what's the, what's really happening. So I'm just trying to understand how the community and how the board, for this side that entered on forward with this project, the political wise entire project, is going to look at the traffic that's being generated. I mean, using the IT standard, it's a standard, I inform that, but at some point in time, we really have to look at the reality on the ground and what's happening. In most cases, the developer might be so, has accommodated, actually has provided more spaces than are required, and then even projected more than that, which is indicative of needing more parking spaces. The real concern is basically those peak hours, and it seems to me, using those formulas blindly, just disregards the reality of what's going to be happening on the ground, and that's a real major concern to me. I don't know if there's some way of giving some indication by a peer reviewer as to what a potential impact might be, aside from what the standard ITA, ITE requiring, that would really be helpful, I think, for the board understanding what's going to be happening at the intersection of Leonard Street going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Pressico, if you'd like to be able to respond to that, too, as much as degrees as you're capable, and then you don't have his email in front of you, so.
Yeah, that is, that is fine. Thank you. Some of the impacts that could be observed on the intercept of traffic with the vans going out for deliveries, even there is maybe a little more than what you would expect through. When you compare a traditional site, there is a specific peak when the volumes are higher versus the rest of the day. A site that has a, deliveries that are going throughout the day may not have a same peak during the peak hours of the, of the, of the streets of 123 may not have the same impact, but the traffic during, throughout the day on 123 is lower than those peaks. So even though there is a little more traffic coming out of the facility throughout the day, the overall impact on number of vehicles that are exiting the, the site is not going to have the same effect as the peak hour. I can explain this better in the sense that instead of having two very defined peaks, you have a lesser, a more continuous number of vehicles that are coming out, but when you overlap the peak of the facility, the overall impact, which you measure in the worst, in the high, heaviest volumes in the morning and in the afternoon, is not going to be the, as much as what has been already approved by MIPA. So instead of having a big punch, you're having a lot of little punches throughout the day, but in, in the sum of all of them, the impact is not going to be the same, it's going to be less than what was originally estimated by MIPA. I'm not sure if that makes sense.
I think it, I think it does, yeah. From a conceptual standpoint, I think it does, and I'm sure, maybe you have any further questions, or if you could just, Paul and follow-up, just forward Orin's email out to the board so we can look at it as well. And if we have further questions on that, we'll follow them back through Paul. Great, thank you.
Sure, please.
Mr. Curtin, did you want to get back up, or any additional Abutters that'd like to come up and speak?
John Parton, 7 Janet Street. I just have a question that I'd like you to ask Condyne. If Condyne has any deals or has approached anybody that are Abutters regarding this project? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. As one of the other members of the board has already stated, I don't think that question is necessarily in this board's purview. I'm not going to ask it directly. It's not my place to say what two private parties do. It's not my part to say if you want to sell your house to somebody else, or if they want to do something with their property that they want to do. I think one, a past member of this board had a phrase, if you have a neighbor who has a tree that you really like, take a picture, because they can cut it down tomorrow if they want. It's blunt, but, yeah. So I'm not going to, so just to close that, I'm not going to ask that question directly to Condyne. To, I'm not going to ask that directly of them at this time.
No problem. It was more important to be able to have extended public. Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, if you'd like to go.
One question?
Yep.
I've been sitting there a couple of days thinking about this. Well, it's the only thing to think about, but, where is the sewage? Is, they're going to have septic systems, and you're going to be connected to a pipe? Hello?
Yeah, I can, I'll have the-
Into that? I mean, from where the building is to the street, we don't have, we have septic systems on our street. So if you're going to have pipes, you're going to have pipes going all the way from the building, all the way to the, to 123?
So I'll let the applicant answer that. I know they said they were going to tie into the water line on Janet Street, but Brandon, if you could-
I mean, and what happens if you have floods? And where is the, is that a good question? I think it is.
Flooding is definitely something to think about, especially-
It's a good question, ma.
Yeah, but what about the-
So flooding is definitely something that is a concern, especially in the aquifer, especially near the wetlands. And that's why we had the stormwater viewer on here. That's what his job is to look at for, what does a 100-year storm do to this land with the buildings on it? Where does the water go? How does all of that work?
You can have a building that high, and I don't know why they have to have it 40 square feet, isn't it how?
That's what they build them out for warehouses, yeah.
And why do you have it so wide? Why don't you just cut it down so that it doesn't affect units or in my house? Cut it right to that point there. Okay, fine. But, but as far as these, how are you going to tie in a septic system or whatever you're going to do? You can't have a septic system with a building like that, because you don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah. If, I'm, I'm sure that he'll be able to kind of show that on the plans. I believe there are plans connected to sewer through, through Leonard Street, correct, Brandon?
Yeah, so there's, there's no septic systems proposed, where it's, as, you know, so we are extending the sewer up all the way from existing Leonard Street, all the way up to the, basically, this point here at the cul-de-sac, and that's where Yale would connect into. They would have a small injector pump with a force main that ran to that.
So both of these buildings would be connected to sewer that runs the entire-
Public sewer that goes out to a private pump station located on the corner of Leonard Street in this extension, and then there's a existing private pump station that they built as part of Phase One. So that pump station would pump to there and then out to the town system. Water, like you said, is extended all the way up.
Goes down Janet Street, goes down Leonard Street and back up Janet.
And then through this area and then up, connects to Janet.
Which was, that connection was connected by the water department, correct?
Correct, correct. And then stormwater, you mentioned that we, having a peer review, but there's state and local standards that we have to meet, we have to do a full analysis to show that peak flows off the site are equal or lesser to what's happening today. And certain recharge water quality requirements that we have to meet overalls for development.
And that ties back to Horstley Witten's comment on the soil tape right there.
Correct, correct.
And so you guys are going to work through that to make sure that the recharge rate is agreeable?
Correct, correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to, I think we've talked about that at some, at some point with, maybe in the last meeting, in terms of where the sewer, that this, it was going to be connected to sewer, but-
And actually, I, the parking comment that was-
Sure.
Addressed before.
Please go ahead.
So the parking, there's a, there's going to be revised calculation on the plans. So basically, we've gotten-
You're not sharing a screen if you're looking to-
Oh, sorry. You are correct. So we will have, you know, revised plans to the board addressing Horstley Witten's comments, any impact from the traffic comments, and then from the town departments with a revised parking calculation, but we were kind of conservative. We took, so 40,925, that's the square footage, that is office, retail, anything non-warehouse. We applied the retail rate. So we basically took any office and we almost said it was related to the retail, not to the warehouse, because the warehouse rate is one per, one space per 3,000 square feet. We calculated all that at one per 400 square feet, so you can see it's obviously, you know, almost 10 times more. So that results in 103 spaces, the rest of the building, the 186 I mentioned, goes to 63 spaces. I think I misspoke before when I said 240, I was saying 40 in 180, to, math is like, what, 226 or something like that? That total is 166 spaces, and we're providing 181.
Thank you. And that's on just the planned documents?
That is on sheet, I think there's an older count on the plans, but that's on the overall sheet six.
Sheet six, thank you.
And we'll, you know, before our next meeting, we'll have, like I said, we'll have a full response to Horstley Witten and all the comments that were received today, all rolled into one revised plan set.
Thank you.
Paul, are we leaving on any other comments from any other town departments?
Not on the town departments.
Okay.
Okay.
Just making sure we kind of clicked them off.
But we still have, we still have to get, so Horstley's done the stormwater, but there's still some other reviews they still have to do, such as the site plan.
Okay, okay.
And any additional questions from members of the public who would like to speak?
I have a question here.
Please.
All right. Tommy Adosa on Burt Street. Okay, I've been listening to all of the comments that were made, okay, and they've been presented to you folks, okay? My question is simple. Since you guys represent the town, and the comments that are made here, these are adjustments. We're asking for adjustments to be made to the plans, okay? What I want to know is, these folks over here, are they, how are they going to make changes to these comments that were made? Are you guys going to, you know, talk to them about it and ask them to make adjustments? Are you going to keep things as they are? Because it sounds to me, as I'm sitting over there, you guys are just voting on the existing plan, and that's all you care about is the existing plan. Well, we don't like the existing plan, all right? We don't want it. We want you to make changes. Change the damn existing plan, talk to these people, and ask them to make adjustments to accommodate their neighbors. We're the ones that, we have to live with this. We live in the neighborhood. We shouldn't have to live like this, with nothing being done. You gotta do something for us. We're not getting any tax relief here, nobody is. I made a comment at a meeting a while back, a long time ago, when this plan was first introduced, when we talked about changing from agricultural to commercial. I get up in the meeting and I said, "Don't buy what they're trying to sell you. Nobody's taxes have ever gone down when a new project was introduced to the town." That's never happened in the history of this town, or any town for that matter. When commercial development comes into a town, and they talk about, "Well, we're going to help you tax base," that's baloney. Nobody's taxes have ever gone down. All I'm saying is, when there's a commercial development going on, what we have to consider is the neighbors, what their comments are. Steve made some very good comments here tonight, some very good suggestions. What we need to do is take some of those suggestions and talk to these folks, and just ask them to be reasonable, and to please be flexible and make some adjustments for us. That's all we're asking. We know that the project has to go on, we understand that, but just make adjustments, you know? They should be able to do that, just be flexible, that's all. And that's my, my only comment. I just want to make sure that everything that's said tonight just, just doesn't, you know, is, is just not talk. I want to make sure something is done. So please help us out that way. I appreciate it. Thank you for listening.
And just to kind of close that out, I'll just say, we will, we will make requests to Condyne. They're here, they're listening. If they choose not to make those changes, then we have to act accordingly. So the plan that we have in front of us at the end is the plan that we vote on.
Okay.
So.
Well, my, my comment is that I want to make sure that the plan that you have right now isn't the plan that you're just going to vote on, that you're going to make adjustments based on the comments we've made here tonight.
We can request adjustments, they can say no, and we have to, we'll, we'll move forward that way.
Well, we're hoping that you, you represent us in the town. Where you need us, by the way.
No, I understand.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? I know we have a couple.
That's that.
Not at this time? Okay. I don't think there's anybody else who's raised their hand via the Zoom meeting. You know, this is not going to be the final meeting where this project is discussed. As we've said, we have a number of different reviews going on where there's going to be comments and feedback and things like that. So if you're here, and if you'd like to speak further in another meeting, please come again. If you're not here and you're watching this either on Channel 15, or you're watching it later online, we're here, we want to hear from you at this meeting, we want to listen to you, we want to get your feedback and your comments. So I think I've rambled for long enough in terms of waiting for anybody else to pop up via the Zoom chat here. Given the other reviews that we have in progress and the timing of those, I think I would look to continue these special permits to another meeting. In terms of what's the timeline on those coming back, do we have any kind of viewpoint on that, and what's?
Well, the next scheduled meeting is October 19th, back here. These reviews need to be coming in, they should be in this week, the remaining review.
Okay. And in terms of-
For, yeah, for the site plan.
And in terms of Brandon or Jeff, if you want to say anything in terms of, in terms of timing, in terms of response back and forth with McMahon or Horstley Witten, do you feel like the two weeks is a good timeline, or do you feel like we should look at one meeting further out?
I think two weeks, we should at least lock in a date, and we'll have to continue, we'll have to continue at that point in time, depending on what we get back from outstanding here with you. peer review.
Maybe I have any further thoughts from members of the board?
Chair, I'll make a motion to continue SP 11449, SP 11450, and SP 11451 to our next meeting on October 19th.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion from members of the board regarding the motion to continue to our next meeting? Okay. Hearing none, I will move to the roll again, starting in person and then moving virtual. Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So special permits for boost our Phase 2 Building 9 is moved to our next meeting, which is the 19th of October. And if this does need to be continued further out from that, Paul, if we can just update the agenda accordingly when we get to that point, that way these, anybody who does wish to comment doesn't show up here, we're not going to be discussing it further. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is another continuation of special permit 494 zero Rarity Street, which is a special permit common drug laying duplexes and development in the Wetlands Potestry District. They are also looking for a continuance to the 19th. This feels like it's gotten on its cycle of being endlessly continued again. Paul, I'll ask this of you. Do you feel like they're actually moving towards a conclusion with conservation at this point?
I would need to have the, I could speak to that.
Okay.
I see Sam is-
Sam, if you'd like to just kind of speak to that point?
Could you repeat that, please?
I feel like we've continued this pretty quickly.
Numerous times.
Yes. So just in terms of-
Correct.
Where you feel you sit with conservation and when we feel like we can get to a resolution on this.
Correct.
Your question continues to the 19th, but-
Our finalized plan to the peer reviewer for conservation, so they'll have adequate time to review it prior to the meeting, which will then be the day prior to the 19th meeting for planning board. We also have submitted, Paul, a finalized plan set that will be the same plans that Conservation is looking at.
Okay. So you feel confident that on the 19th we'll be looking at the final plan set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Paul does have those if members want to take a prior look at them.
We always try to, yes. That's why we always have such hard questions right off the bat. Okay. Any further comments from members of the board regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to continue SP 494 to October 19th.
Second. Thank you, Scott, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. We are now moving through those special permit discussions and we have an additional public hearing on upcoming town meeting warrant regarding the Finance Appointment Committee. And Paul, I believe we have the town manager, Mike Units, on the Zoom call?
He is. And I've also submitted the Outlook invite to select board member Michael Tool. And just to introduce this, there are two agenda items, or two items proposed to be on the town warrant to change the charter and the bylaw to create a finance appointing committee. As you know, now the finance committee is appointed by the town moderator. There is a proposal that there would be boards like the planning board that would appoint a person to the finance appointment committee who then, the appointment committee would then appoint people to the finance committee. If I'm not talking in circles, anyway. So I do understand last Thursday the select board did not take an action, but they're still wanting to hear from the different boards and would love to hear from you. Would you be interested in pursuing this as an idea to create a finance appointment committee? And Mike, is there anything else?
No, I think Paul explained it. Well, the selectmen haven't made a decision whether to put this on the warrant yet or not. They were waiting to hear back from the boards, the planning board, the school committee, and the board of assessors if members of those boards would be willing to sit on it, such as this. So that's why we're here tonight, just to get your input on that, whether you would be willing to sit on a board, an appointing committee for the finance committee.
Mike, is it just those three seats or are there more than just those three seats?
So there'd be five members on the committee. It would be the moderator, a representative appointed by the board of selectmen, a representative appointed by the school committee, a representative appointed from the planning board, and a representative appointed from the board of
And those representatives would be, would be the finance committee?
No, they would be the finance appointing committee. They would interview and appoint people to the finance committee.
So should someone leave the finance committee? Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
No, I fully agree with it. I think it's a fantastic idea.
Mr. Chair, can I ask who the sponsor is of this article?
Right now, the article was drafted by selectman Tool and the board of selectmen are reviewing it to see if they want to put it on the warrant.
Great. Thank you.
Mike, was this something that came out of the charter when we reviewed the charter?
I can't say for I, to be honest with you, whether that was in there or not.
Okay. And in terms of timing in relation to the warrant, and Paul, I know you mentioned the select board did not take an action one way or another. What is the timing related to whether we would make a recommendation on this as it relates to town meeting? This is probably our last one to submit anything-
Well, we have-
Where we get to the select board in time?
It's, yeah, because your next meeting's October 19th.
And town meeting's the 25th?
Yeah.
So this would be our one and only opportunity to quote-unquote speak to this.
Well, because they haven't taken an action, you don't, I don't believe you have the ability to recommend it to town meeting at this point.
Well, it wouldn't be our recommendation anyways, right? It would be the select board?
Right. So the select board has to put it on the warrant.
Right.
And they have until, their last meeting is the 14th and they have until the 15th to make that decision. So it would just really be if you wanted to inform the planning board if one of your members, if you think one of your members would be willing to sit on subject committee.
So, Mike, it's similar to what I do on the capital improvements committee, right? I sit on that committee as part of, as the planning board representative. You'd go to separate meetings when needed to determine if a member would sit on the finance committee.
Exactly. So each year after the April election, you'd appoint one of your members to be on the capital or to be on this committee.
And that's the only other committee that I can think of, Paul, that's similar in nature, right?
Right. That's the only one we were able to figure out too.
Right. Okay. So for anybody who doesn't know, I sit on the capital improvements committee as the planning board representative. So we meet and Mike will tell you, we're going to meet kind of in advance of town meeting and we go over all the capital requests. It's similar makeup with a planning board, a finance committee member, Mike, board of selectmen, and a school committee. So it's similar, definitely sounds very similar in nature to that. So we have a couple of meetings before town meeting to go over the capital budget and the requests and we vote on obviously what's then put toward that town meeting.
Okay.
Having spent six years on a finance committee, I think it's a very good idea. And it's also similar because I was the finance committee member that helped get Mike's point.
Should we be praising you for that or should we? Just kidding, Mike, just kidding.
I didn't say one way or the other. You can have your own.
You can have your own opinion, Mike. I love it.
Okay. Well, I think since we've had two board members on the planning board say this is a really good idea, I think that that's the, unless anybody feels strongly the other way, I think that's the message that we would pass along to the select board from our perspective.
I'm for it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think, you know, right now it's one person. It'd be great to have a selection of people. Yeah, I think the makeup that's described is a good one. So, yeah, I mean, I would definitely support it as well.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, it can't be on that board too. So somebody else is volunteering, guys. Steve put his finger up. Or Wayne. All right, good. We got interest.
So I don't think-
Yeah, absolutely would.
Given where it sits with the select board, I don't think we're looking for a specific motion at this point. So I think it would just be close the discussion. I'll see if you have any further.
I think Mike knows what you're saying.
Mr. Chair, just one thought. I agree with you as well, but there's a second part of appointing new members. It's reappointing existing members and the moderator is closer to the finance committee because the finance committee provides recommendations for the town meeting. Obviously, the moderator wants to talk about it. So the moderator is closer to the work of the finance committee. So he is in a better position to decide whether existing members should be reappointed based on their performance, you know, on the committee. So that would be the only hesitation that I would have is how well will this five-member appointment group be able to evaluate, you know, the performance of individual FinCon members? But otherwise, I support it, Paul.
I think, like I said, the moderator was one of the members, correct?
Correct. The moderator would actually chair the committee and the current members of the committee, the finance committee, unless their terms end, you know, after this is passed, the current, all the members would still be on the finance committee until their terms end. And then they could either be reappointed or someone else. And the moderator would be the chairman of the committee.
And again, and again, I'm supportive and I'm just thinking ahead in practice because that appointment committee will have to reappoint these FinCon members as their terms expire. So that's just another part of the job responsibility that you have to think ahead. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay. And just to confirm, Paul, they're not looking for a motion or anything from us? This is kind of, this is what they needed?
Mike, I defer to you.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, since they didn't take an action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The red stock's a one and three, not them.
Oh, you're killing me.
Okay.
Good update, Mike.
Okay. Well, the final item on our agenda this evening is just a discussion, so there's no action needed, but about a potential Pine Street cluster development. And I see a member here coming up here to speak. So I'll just let you introduce yourself for the record. Paul, if you could share a plan set on the screen for anybody who's on the virtual meeting and we'll go from there.
How you doing? My name is Bob Forbes and I'm from Zenith Consulting Engineers. I just wanted to thank you for letting me come here tonight to discuss the project with you a little bit. We're very much in the preliminary phases of everything. Survey's been done on the property, photography's been done. We've gone to the Conservation Commission to get the wetlands line established and fixed. And I don't know if you'd like me to, do you have?
He's going to pull it up here for him.
Can you tell us the address of the property?
It's on Pine Street. I don't know the actual address.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
It's, I think, there's a locus and it may help you with it, with the location of it. Where the back part of the property touches a rail line, I believe, and it backs up to Briggs Street and South Washington Street on the backside of it. So.
I'm just pulling up the conceptual.
Yeah. If you could, do you have the conventional one? So again, we've done some conceptual layouts and this is about a 110-acre parcel. And it's a little bit hard to see at this scale, but the black line with the dotted hatching in the middle is the wetlands areas. So you can see there's quite some, there's an extensive amount of wetlands on the property. The blue areas are vernal pools, which I don't know what the board knows about that, but as far as the Conservation Commission is concerned, they're sacred areas. They're probably the most valuable areas to them that they want to conserve. So we did a conventional layout. We sat down with Paul. Paul was nice enough to have us come in and we talked with him and the building inspector a while ago, probably two or three months ago. And we chatted about this and the developer, Drew and his brothers, they want to do a cluster here. I think it, I think it really lends itself to be a cluster development. I don't know how many have been done in town, but interestingly enough, probably about 20 years ago, I did one in this town. It's called Christina Estates and you may be familiar with it. It's now Copener Road and Willis, Willis Drive, and it's right off of 123. It's just this way down, 123. If you're going towards the highway, it's on the right-hand side. We, this, so the conventional layout ends up, we did a conventional layout here and that establishes the number of lots that we'd be allowed to do in the cluster plan. And that ends up being 44 lots. So if you wouldn't mind going to the other one, Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you. We did a, so we did a, this is a cluster development. You can see the proposed roadways and the proposed lots and the amount of space that we'd be allowed to preserve as open space here. It's a little bit tricky for this particular parcel of land because we're in R80 zoning. So the cluster allows us to go down to 40,000 square foot lots, which is still a fairly large lot. And what it doesn't do is it doesn't allow us to reduce the frontage. So we worked really hard to come up with this plan. You'll see that there's a, we did, we did one layout and it's the third plan that I sent you?
Do you want that up?
If you don't mind. This one, there's no, the other plan showed a wetlands crossing. This one just shows a cul-de-sac on this side and then a loop road with a cul-de-sac off it there. There's no, there's no direct wetlands impacts on that. And we went to the Conservation Agent and brought this to her attention and the outgoing agent. She was a little bit concerned about the areas up in here. We had no impacts to any of the vernal pools, but she was wondering if there was any way that we could take some of these lots that were up here and bring them and put them in this area back here with all of them, the no-wetlands impact. So we went to, we did that. We tried to do that. And if you go back to the, yeah, perfect. Thank you very much, Paul. We did just that. She asked us to do this and we're able to do it now. This is a little bit odd situation. We have a direct wetlands impact, but we're staying away from those vernal pools. So we brought that to the Conservation Commission and they agreed with the agent. So as far as wetlands impacts goes, this is where they would like to be. So as far as wetlands impacts goes, this is where they would like to be. So we're here just presenting it to you guys. Hopefully, if there's any strong, strong feelings one way or the other about it, we can take them into account when we, when we go and do the extensive amount of engineering that this is going to require. One of the main things I just want to point out is fairly obvious that we have essentially two cul-de-sacs. And there's 20 lots off of one of them and 22 off the other. So don't know if that's going to be an issue, but I wanted to present that to you at this point. And again, the, I know probably nobody here was, was on the board in the early 2000s, it might even been 1990s, late 1990s, when I did that other project in town. There were 27 lots on that one, and it was a similar configuration to, to this site here. We had one road come in with a loop, a loop around it. So that's pretty much it. And we just wanted to present it, and again, find out if the board has any recommendations, strong feelings one way or the other, wanted to steer us in one direction or another.
So you'd be looking to submit these as streets and have them be accepted by the town?
Absolutely, yep. Under, under that cluster provision, I would ask.
And they would come in as a special permit?
Yeah.
What, do you know when the last cluster that went in was in Norton?
Wait, I have to look.
Probably before, before you were here, obviously.
Right, we haven't done one since I've been here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't recall one. Yeah. I can't remember anything specifically in recent memory, but.
The closest we would have had was the Waiting River Estates. It was cluster-like, but that was the affordable housing provision, although it allowed cluster in.
Yeah.
Back in the late 80s, there was the Newcombe Homes. The Newcombe Affordable Living Homes.
That was, that was a ways back.
Ah.
Okay. So, yeah. Paul, I haven't fully gone into the full detail of the cluster bylaws here that we have on the books, but is there anything that's in relation to those that jumps out here? I know you said that.
They would qualify because there, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but you have to have a minimum acreage, 10 acres, I think.
Correct, yeah, this is about 110.
Yeah, so, and it's allowed in the zoning district, but there are going to be provisions. They have to set aside open space. You know, so it's, I have to, I can't recall all the mechanisms. It's a special permit. I don't think there's a subdivision approval or there might be.
There is. There is a subdivision, as far as I understand.
Yeah.
So it would be, I believe that we would file a special permit application along with a definitive subdivision plan. And included in that special permit is that, the yield plan, the, the conventional subdivision layout. Now, what's typically done is you, you can't just lay it out on paper like we've shown here. We have to show that engineering-wise it works as well. So it's a fairly extensive amount of engineering. It just goes into the yield plan. With, it wouldn't be a full subdivision, but it would be, we'd have to show at least a review of this board and a review, you're a reviewer, that they're legitimate lots. The slidos would accept a septic system, the drainage works in theory, et cetera. So we would have to do that along with a full subdivision, definitive subdivision submitted for the cluster roadways, and, and then the special permit, which would have additional requirements that may be along with that.
And the, and the cluster, so the, the cluster provision only allows them to go up to the number of units that they could do under conventional. So some cluster subdivision requirements in other, other municipalities actually can give a, give a bonus due to the clustering, in this case, protect environmentally sensitive land. But we don't do that. Ours just is, what's, what, the number of units you could get under the conventional, you have to, you cannot exceed those with a cluster.
That's right. And it just, I mean, we, we put, these plans aren't just lines on paper. We've actually put thought into it and looked at soils, et cetera. We have, we have a strong feeling that we can do this, but there's a likelihood when we go through and do that more thorough engineering that we may be able to tweak an extra lot, or we may lose one or two, or three for, for drainage purposes, or whatever other purposes there are. So what I said to Paul and what the Conservation Commission has seen, I want to make it very clear, it's just very, it's very conceptual at this point.
But what you're looking for here is if we have reservations, raise the big red flag now?
Exactly, before we go in and spend months. It's literally months of engineering here.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, is that a vernal pool in the lower right-hand corner?
Yes. Yep, you've got one down here, and then all these others essentially flow in this direction. So they were very concerned about preserving the area in between the, the vernal pools, apparently.
So are you able to have a lot with that vernal pool in that hole?
Yeah, these, surprisingly enough, these lots are so large, even in the cluster, that's a 40,000 square foot lot, so the green line is a hundred-foot setback from the, from the wetland. So once we place the house on here, on lot 13 and 14, we're able to place them without even having to file with Conservation Commission because it would be outside the hundred-foot buffer zone. There's, that may change. We may end up going to them to develop those lots, but as far as vernal pool goes, the habitat, there's, there's a vernal pool, and there's a vernal pool habitat associated with that. As far as the habitat goes for that vernal pool, it's only allowed to extend to the limits of the wetland within which the certified vernal pool exists. So the, the vernal pool is the blue, the habitat area is the limits of the wetlands line. So we would be, you know, 50, at least 50, maybe 100 foot away from the vernal pool habitat for that, for those lots.
Are you thinking single-family duplexes?
Single-family.
All single-family?
Yeah.
Where would the, what are they thinking, what are you thinking for open space?
That, if you could pull back out, everything that isn't lots, so.
Oh, sorry.
So what's required for open space under the, the cluster provision is 35% of the upland area. So it had, so, my understanding is you calculate the entire upland area for the entire parcel. At least 35% of that upland area has, of upland has to be, there's open space. So what we have is all of this area in here, and a little bit up here that we can't see right now, that would all be open space. And the upland, the amount of, of that would be 40%. So it would be, it's about 30, it's actually about 38.8% the way we have it calculated now. And again, that might get tweaked a little bit, too. Some of these lots are a little oversized, so we can might be, have some flexibility to pull them back in, and we'll obviously provide as much open space as possible.
And the white section on the bottom, adjacent to Pine Street, is existing housing?
Yes. There, there's actually an existing house here, this parcel. These are, this is residential, this is residential right here. So this is part of the property, but the frontage is not usable because it's all wetland in that. And then we have, obviously, this frontage here, this frontage here.
So laying, laying out those two, let's say hopefully town streets, you know, definitely look at those residential lots around Pine to make sure where the driveway curb cuts are. You know, we don't want the curb cuts kind of, you know, on top of each other, thinking that if you're going to have, you know, 20 families using one of these at a time, give or take. So make sure you look at that. And then, I don't know what this curvature is like on this section of Pine Street. You know, some of them have pretty, Pine Street has some major curves in it, so take that into consideration, too, when you guys are looking at kind of how you want to, you know, have those driveways work, you know, just on that street, because some of it isn't, doesn't have the clearest line of sight.
For sight that you want to, yeah, we will absolutely verify that.
Yeah, so make sure you're looking at that, too, I think, and, and then I know when you come back and you lay out kind of the houses, you know, put the existing residential on there, too, we'll want to see kind of how that all lays out.
Absolutely. Thank you, those are all good points. Yeah, we'll get you actual site distances there for about each entrance.
Mr. Chair, this is Kevin. Just a couple of questions, actually. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm looking at the flood plain map, and just, just a note and observation that this parcel is not in any flood zone, it's not in the AE or the A, which is great news, especially considering all the vernal, the vernal pools that are in the area. So that's always good. And it appears, looking at the, the locus up at the top right, this is right before the bend in Pine Street, and it looks like the property abuts the, the rail line, which is at some point going to be the bike path. If that's true.
That is true.
Oh, okay, thank you. And that, that's a great asset for people that, you know, if you go forward with this budget, people that live in this development will be able to have direct access to the bike path potentially. But also, the, the SUGA line goes under the rail right now, the old rail trail. So has there been any consideration into possibly, I don't even know if it's feasible what the cost would be, to tap into that SUGA line?
We have not looked at that. The soils on site, a couple, first of all, the soils on site are really good. Surprising with the amount of wetlands, we have very sandy soils here. So the proposal at this point, the idea at this point is to go with onsite septic for each house. You're absolutely right, and we're, all of your points about the, the rail were made by the Conservation Commission, where we went in front of them informally as well. And they actually asked us, of course, this is something that would be up to the planning board, but they asked us if we would provide access to that open space from these roadways with some parking as well. So, and, and the developer has no problem with that. In fact, he was, he thought that was an excellent idea. So if that's something the planning board would like, we'd be happy to provide that as well.
Proximity on the map, where, where would the rail trail be? Is it up north?
Is there any chance you can pull, if you could pull out, I can show you.
It'll be on the top side of this.
Yeah.
Yes, literally.
So this, this, you know, right here, this is the rail trail. So it hits, I mean, it's got good frontage on the rail trail up top.
Exactly. It's this, it's this parcel right here, and again, you'll see that, you can almost see it here better.
Yeah.
That line right there, the real straight one, is the rail. And that's the back of that property right there.
Yeah, that's a lot of frontage that you guys have on that.
Yeah.
So to be able to provide access from this subdivision to, to the rail trail would be.
Absolutely, with some gravel parking there.
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah, and they have, they have little areas like that off the Mansfield bike path that I can think of, you know, like, you know, either people are parking at the end of the cul-de-sac, but if you guys could make kind of a nice little connection, that, that would be great, and then people aren't, you know, parking right in front of somebody's driveway.
Yeah.
Is the address of this parcel 154 Pine Street?
I apologize, but I don't have an address for it.
I, I have Gregory Germain as the owner trustee, so I don't know if that's the, but anyway, it appears that's the address, 154. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Or any of you who's with us virtually here? Okay.
So, so Mr. Chair, I think what the, what he's looking for is kind of a litmus test whether we're, we would be in support, and if we put a lot of money into the land or not. I know we're not taking a vote, but for me personally, you know, we've kind of known we really lax new home construction since the 90s. There hasn't been great, limited new home construction. Of course, more than anything, we need affordable housing, but to have any new development in town, I think would be a good thing for any existing residents who want to move up to a larger home, and also, you know, new people are looking for a place to live in the town. There's been really pretty limited new construction probably within the last 20 years. We haven't seen much at all. I don't think the school superintendent, the school committee is going to agree with me because of the impact on the schools and the services, but in general, you know, I support it. We'll see where it goes going forward, but I think that's what he's looking for, some indication whether or not it's worth their effort going forward if it's one of us. So it's my, my, my feedback.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. I think that's, you're looking for a green or yellow or red flag basically at this point?
Yeah, and, and whether or not the board is in favor of clusters. I know when we met with Paul, he said there hadn't been one in a while, and sometimes it's due to the fact that they haven't had good success with them in town or whatever. But yeah, that, that's kind of the direction we want to go. It's going to be developed as something, and if this is something that makes sense, and we work it out and hash it out over the next few months, that's kind of what we're hoping to get from the board.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, I mean, I think cluster is much better on this site than, you know, showing the conventional plans, given the environmental constraints. I think the connection to the, to the rail trail, or it's soon to be, would be a great asset, and certainly can be a community asset if the developer is willing to go that route. So, you know, I would definitely, you know, look forward to discussing it more with you guys, and I would definitely be in, in favor of some clustering in order to, you know, preserve those resources as needed and provide the open space.
Great, thank you.
And then, Tim, just to add on to, to the chairman, the Estates of Norton, I believe, was a cluster development as well. There were over 100 homes there, and also I'm familiar with Carpenter Road. Those are nice neighborhoods. You would never know that they're, they're a cluster zone. 40,000 square foot lots are very large lots for, for homes pretty much anywhere. The only concern that I would have had is if it was in a flood zone and we needed to protect that, and therefore, you know, the cluster may be, you know, prohibit, you know, 40,000 square foot zones. But it really depends on the Conservation Commission and their, you know, influence and concern about the vernal pools, and it doesn't sound like they have much right now so, so far. So, so good, I guess.
Yeah, but I think as we mentioned earlier, there's a new Conservation Director starting in a week, so let's say it's starting all over again. Start all over again.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you.
Kevin brought up, I think, an interesting point, some might not, but we haven't, in fact, our new census data is out, and we only grew, we didn't, we grew by less than 200 people in the last 10 years. That was surprising because the original estimates were showing about 1,000, and when they came out a few weeks ago, it was about 180. But when I look back at some of the charts that Serpent produced for our master plan, our growth was percentage-wise was big in the 80s and 90s and started to really taper off. And growing by less than 200 people in 10 years, that's, that's small growth. And, and looking back, and we haven't done a significant subdivision approval in years, a cluster subdivision, so that stuff happened 20 years ago. So this is one, you know, larger piece of property we haven't seen in a long time here that's coming forward.
Yeah. Okay. And has it any further, otherwise, I think, you feel like you got what you needed tonight?
I think so. I want to really thank you for all your input and allowing me to come here, especially on a Red Sox playoff night.
Hey, you're here with us, so you're, you're going through the same torture.
I was outside waiting, and I got the 3-0 score. I was going to let you know. You stole my thunder.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So before I look for any other motions, Paul, is there anything further that we wanted to say at this time?
No other questions, we just signed the, the N R.
Okay, so we have to sign a N R before we leave? Anything else I'll leave unsaid?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Julie, for the. Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will go yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody in person and joining us virtually.